All right, first of all, thank you, everybody. Sorry about the technical difficulties. I think it's Jim's fault. He's my neighbor down the street, so he's playing with the internet or something. With that said, we will, let me get my agenda back up here. If something happens, Gary, where are you at on my screen here? Obviously, your mayor, Potem, you can take it over with the help of the chairman, Chairman Griffith. All right, we'll call to order the City of Hot Springs Joint Meeting of the City Council and the Planning Commission. This is a special meeting for Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one at four P. M. We are video, we are via video conference due to COVID exposures at City Hall. We've taken this to video, so that is a reason that we're here, and we are sorry for anyone that was inconvenienced with this. It was going to show up in person, but unfortunately, COVID is still hanging in there in our lives, and we have to take the precautions necessary. So may we have a roll call with the City Council, please?
Councilmember Betts.
President.
Councilmember Nunez.
President.
Councilmember Pye.
Here.
Mayor Potem Gardner.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present. And then I'll give it over to the chairman for the Planning Commission to call his role.
Commissioner Grant.
Present.
Commissioner Meyerhoffen.
Present.
Commissioner Indell.
Present.
Vice Chair Duffel.
Present.
And Chairman Griffith.
All right, appreciate that. We're going to bypass pledge of allegiance tonight. We're going to go to public comments. Do we have any public comments?
No, we do not.
All right, so just to lead off discussion item number one, which is a policy procedures and future planning discussion. I spoke with the chairman, and there was a request by multiple commissioners and even a council member who thought it'd be a good idea for the Planning Commission, the City Council, to have a joint study session. There really was no direct reason to have it, so just to put on the plate, if you're going through, let's say, planning of a large project or updating your general plan, those are sometimes reasons to call study sessions jointly with the two, the commission and the council to kind of get the details on where we're going with the direction. But yeah, there was meeting new members on the commission and some requests. I met with the Planning Commission, I believe it was April, May, and said that we would, after you kind of got through the summer and everyone got to kind of working together, we would have a study session. Unfortunately, I wanted to do it more like October, but our schedules were so busy, it's unfortunately taken us into December. But how I foresee tonight, after speaking with, or at least emailing all of you, I had a chance to talk with most of you and one person via email on the Planning Commission on what direction you really wanted to go. There was one commissioner that was, had kind of some ideas about future planning and where the city is going, and I think that's a discussion we can have tonight. To make it fair, we only have two hours before your next meeting, so we'd like to finish with an hour and a half if possible. There might only be five minutes of discussion. I don't know where this is going to be headed, but this is an opportunity. There is a hand raised button, and being that we're on Zoom, I'll try to go between the two screens I have here and try to make sure that everybody gets an opportunity. And then basically, this is the opportunity the commission to ask questions to the City Council. If you have a specific counselor that you'd like to ask a question to, I'm open to that. If you have a specific question that staff can answer for you, please let us know, and we'll call on them. For those of you in the Planning Commission, I'm sure most of you have seen our meetings. I ask for decorum and to be recognized when you speak and not talk over each other, especially on Zoom. So if there's something you'd like to say, please use the raise hand thing. If you can't find that, sometimes I have trouble, just raise your right, raise your right hand, and I'll try to find you on there. But I'm going to try to use the best process we can to get each and every one of you to make some comments. I'm going to start and give it over to the chair to make a few comments, but I just wanted to say as a Planning Commissioner, I appreciate everything you do. You're doing it basically for nothing, and you're doing it for the volunteerism of your community to basically get these projects through, which are required by state law to have this extra step in there, the Planning Commission. And so we appreciate, I think, everyone from the City Council, and I don't want to speak for all of them, but I think I can pretty much say that we all appreciate your time that you have to spend in this process. And it's not always easy if you're new on the commission, coming over and being part of the process, but I can say we have an excellent staff. They can always assist you if you ever need that. Please don't hesitate to reach out to them and utilize their knowledge. We're all active in our community and want to see the best for our community, but a lot of times it's about the technical stuff, and that's where you have the City Attorney's Office and the Planning Department, the Community Development, and City Manager's Office, and Finance, and they can all get those questions answered for you. Rather, you take the time and try to get the answers to your questions and try to make a decision based on what you believe to be true and not always the truth. So with that, that's what I'll start with. Mr. Chair, would you have anything you'd like to add?
Hopefully, you can hear me. I'm having some difficulties on my end now, and everyone's frozen. I didn't catch all of that, so I don't know what, kind of what to add.
I said you were the coolest dude ever.
Well, I definitely wouldn't go there, but I think, what do I want to add? What's the purpose of meeting? I don't know. I think maybe I should just say, my approach to the meetings, or any meeting, doesn't have to be this meeting or Planning Commission meeting, any meeting. Anybody who saw the Historical Society meeting, I will understand this. I don't really like to waste a lot of time. I think that we all have jobs, most of us have jobs. We have a job to do. We go in there, we do our job, and we go home. A lot of times, people come and sit through these meetings, and they have their own agendas. Developers, they may be doing things all day, and then they have to come and maybe sit through three or four items. And the longer it takes for us to get through them, the longer they have to wait. And I know that gets frustrating on everybody's part. So I know that sometimes the meetings might seem to go a little too quick for some people, but I look at it from the perspective of, everybody is there, everybody's investing their time, and we don't have time to waste, certainly not my time, certainly not your time, and certainly not developers' or even residents' time who are sitting there. So, I mean, I don't know what else I could add, but I like to come in, and I like to do my job and go home.
I appreciate that. So I'll start with some of the council members and let them just put in their two cents about this, and maybe that'll lead to some conversation from the commissioners. I will start with Mayor Potem Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only thing I would have to add to all of this is having served on the Planning Commission myself. Before I was elected to council, I really do appreciate all of the hard work you all put into it. It's, that packet can sometimes be a little bit intimidating, and I'll echo what the mayor said. We have a fantastic staff who are always ready to answer any questions that you have. I know that, you know, it's a weekend project to have to read through that packet and understand it, and then take a couple of days after that to get any questions you have answered, and then grind through the meeting, and all for a small, little stipend every month. And as a city, we very much appreciate all of that. I remember when I first was appointed to the Planning Commission, took a while for me to get to get my sea legs, if you were, as to how it all worked and what we needed to do. And I had two very good chair, three actually, including Councilmember Pye for a couple of meetings, who helped me do that. And so your chair is also a great source to, for additional information. I know your current chair was also on the City Council and was on the Planning Commission as well. So he knows how the process works, and he's a good source for information for that. Personally, as a council member who has appointed members to this body, I always take the position that I chose you for one reason, because I respect your skills, and I respect your knowledge set, and I respect your opinion, and I don't expect you to call me and ask me how you should do something. Feel free to call and ask what I think about something if you want, but I will never give you direction on what I think you should vote for. I put you on that commission because I trust your judgment on that, and that's where I would like to go. But you can always discuss things with me or any other council member if you have questions or concerns about a bigger picture item or even a small picture item. We're here to help you out as well. So that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor, and I'll chime in if anything piques an interest, and we'll go from there. But you can always discuss things with me or any other council member if you have questions or concerns about a bigger picture item or even a small picture item. We're here.
Sure, I'm getting feedback.
Mr. Mayor, and I'll chime in if anything piques an interest and like to go. But you can always discuss things with me or any other council member.
Are you guys hearing the repeat?
Questions or concerns about a bigger picture item or even a small picture item. We're here.
Yeah, I'm getting that too. I don't know what's.
That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor, and I'll chime in. Anything piques an interest and like to go. But you can always discuss.
I'm getting that too, and I'm on my iPad.
I can say I've now been transported to hell because I have.
Me too.
And I'll chime in if anything piques an interest and like to go.
You can't stop a Gerald on your end.
Things with me or any other council member.
I don't know how to.
I could log out and see if that stops it.
I can end the meeting and everyone else just.
Chime in if anything piques an interest and.
I don't think it's going to stop, so.
Try muting your microphone if you're on a double connection.
Concerns about a bigger picture item or even a small picture item. Mr. Mayor, and I'll chime in if anything piques an interest and like to go. But you can always discuss things with me or.
Something worked.
Can anybody hear?
I'm back.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that. Boy, there are some gremlins on the internet today.
I think it might have been the double connection with the phone. I had that happen to me once, the phone and the other connection.
I knew you liked the sound of your own voice, Gary, but that's too much, man.
I don't know. After thirty years in radio and TV broadcasting, I've heard my voice more than I care to admit.
All right, did it stop? Oh, thank God.
Yes, I agree.
Gary, are you back?
I'm back.
All right, let me move you back into my screen here. All right, thank you, everybody. Sorry about technical difficulties. I'll go to Russell Betts next.
Well, I could go on for an hour, but that might turn into three hours if the same thing happened, so maybe I'll keep it to twenty minutes. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
So I'm first, say, really appreciate the time everybody puts in. I know it's a very difficult job. It's way more time than just what you have when you're there at the meeting. You get intensive packets that you have to go over and look at. Probably Planning Commissioners, you know, some respects with all the detail you have to get into. It's tougher than some of the meetings the council goes through. You guys got to really drill down into detail, in my view. So I'm not going, I'm going to take Robert's cue and just get to the point rather than, you know, waste a bunch of time. You know, I'm looking at some of the things that have taken place in the city over the years and thinking, you know, where the heck were we when it came to planning? Let me use an example, meandering sidewalks. When I drive Dyna Shore or somewhere else, and that picture behind me was an attempt to show a meandering sidewalk. It didn't work very good, but it looks like I'm about to get run over by a car. But I look at, you know, other cities, and I say, dang, if I lived in that neighborhood, I'd love to take a walk down that meandering sidewalk. They've got a thirty, forty, even fifty-foot setback and a sidewalk that's six foot wide, going up hills around, beautifully landscaped. And usually what happens when you require that, well, the developer goes, well, heck, there goes one whole row of houses, and I want that density. But I gotta, I sit there and say, well, how do I get my city to look like that city? So I'm looking at, if you go up Pearson Boulevard, here we got a huge, hundreds of acres development at Skyborne, which is a nice development, but along Pearson Boulevard, it's a limpy sidewalk. And I'm going, how the heck did that happen? That's way before our time. But these are the things I would really like the commission to look at and get into detail. When you see the plans, say, no, it's not acceptable. You know, other cities have better sidewalks. I want better sidewalks. And if it means send it back, sorry, go back and redesign it, do it. Another problem I have once in a while is sometimes the commission will say, well, you know, hey, send this off to staff and have them redesign it. And that's not what's supposed to happen. First off, the public is supposed to be able to be in charge of this process, and the public isn't watching what staff designs. They're watching what you guys decide and you working on their behalf. I see a prob, I'm just going down this list if I'd been later in the longer list, but you got an agenda today that I don't know how any of you could have possibly read that over the weekend. If you got any other kind of a job, you got it on Thursday. It's what, four, five thousand pages? And you would, if I started to look at that, reading it, and I'm going, dang, I need ten days on that one, or I'm going to be busy all weekend studying that thing. And I think there's some unrealistic expectations, and it used to be the commission agenda used to be dropped off at Commissioner's House in paper with full sets of plans, full-size plans, some of the stuff you can't look at electronically. So I don't know how you can, you know, possibly study that agenda that you got coming up and the time that you've had. Maybe some of you are really good, and that's all you did all weekend was read your agenda. But and just an example of some of the detail, if you go look around other cities, the shopping centers, and you're going to see sprinkler heads with no plant around it. The plant died. And you'll see lots of sprinkler heads, and you see lots of vegetation that has died. Now, part of that is city not doing its job of making sure that the shopping center maintains its landscaping, but there's some type of plants that apparently don't do well in shopping centers. And I remember when Steve Saboda was on the Planning Commission, and he knows this stuff really, really well. And, you know, he'd get a plant list from staff had prepared and sent it on, and he'd say, no, these kind of plants are going to die. They don't hold up. You can see all over the valley and shopping centers where they don't hold up. Let's take these out, substitute those out, let's put other ones in. Somebody would want to do a one-gallon pot. I'm about done here, in case you're wondering, a one-gallon pot. And, you know, he'd pick out the detail, no, you know, a one-gallon pot and a plant, that's nice. Eventually, the plant will grow, but it should be a five-gallon pot. That's the standard. The point is, that's the kind of detail I think the Planning Commission needs to get into. And we've had debates around here. People say, well, you're redesigning the project. And yes, that's what you're supposed to do. If it's insufficient, you're supposed to redesign it. So I'm just going to wrap it up here by saying that I really want you guys to not get through a meeting as quickly as you can. I want you to take as much time as it takes. And the last thing is, I watched a Palm Springs Planning Commission meeting, and staff sent through a plan, and the debate was, do we send this on and just let the staff work it out? And the Planning Commission said, no, that's our job. We're going to do it. And so they sent it back and said, staff, bring this one back to us when you have a complete set of plans for us to review. I'll end here, but the pitch is to dig in and do more detail, not less. And I got to throw this one in. There's a building on Palm Drive that is a placed on a corner lot. This goes back years and years and years ago, but it's an interior building. An interior building has two flat walls and a front. It's in the middle of the street, faces the front, one set of windows. But on a corner lot, it's supposed to have windows to both streets. Somehow, our city took and put, approved a building, it's right there in Palm, near Fifth or Sixth, somewhere around there, that has, it's an interior building placed on a corner lot, and the guy didn't have to put any windows, so all you get is this corridor look. You don't get the wraparound look. Everybody knows what a wraparound building looks like on a corner. And I was wondering, how do we make those type of mistakes in our planning? It's because we're just not paying enough attention to detail. Okay, if that's it, I'll let somebody else talk.
Okay, thank you. Again, we'll, never mind. We'll move on to Jan Pye.
Okay, I have, I'm assuming that Mr. Betts was one of the council members that wanted this. I need to hear from the Planning Commission. I'm not real clear on why we're having this.
I don't think I was one of the commissioners, sorry to interrupt, but I'm not sure what.
Okay, then if you weren't, I want, I need to hear who wanted this and why, and then I can address it. But I will tell you this about what you said. With regard to the agenda, that's what, when you decide whether you're a council or whether you're a Planning Commission, that's what you decide to do, is to read the agenda, whether you get it, what, even if you get it on Thursday, and there's reasons for that. With respect to having the agenda electronically, when I was on the Planning Commission, sometimes we could get stuff by Thursday, sometimes we didn't. It would, sometimes it was dependent on the Xerox machine. I asked if we could have the same thing that the council did, and that was to have it electronically. But if you don't want it electronically, all you have to do is ask, and then you'll get it hard copy. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Nunez.
Thank you. Good evening, staff. Good evening, commission. Actually, I was the one that asked for a group study session, well, with both of us only, so I can familiar, familiar myself with the Planning Commission and the standards that they have, and they have been going off of. And that's, that's basically, I mean, if they had any issues, I think it's great for us to be on the same page with the Planning Commission, and that way we're not crossing over each other. I would love to pull their brains and see what they think and how we can both work together, making sure we're on the same page of building standards, landscape standards, and moving, and moving forward with plans in our city. I think those are very, very important, because when you think about it, what we, what we plan and what we approve and what's actually done is, is going to be set in stone for, you know, fifty, sixty years if possible. You know, if the city is growing the way it's growing, we have to remember we're making decisions that's going to impact our city. And on the other point, it's just, I, even, even if we have a small agenda or a big agenda, I think it, no time limit should be, be put on, on any item during a planning commission meeting or a city council meeting. Doesn't matter if we're there one, two, three in the morning. I think we owe the city the best of what we can give, and if it runs two, three hours, if it runs four or five hours, it's just that. If we wish to continue items, then let's do so, but let's do it appropriately. Let's do it, you know, where we can come back and really, really put our best into what we plan for our city. Lastly, if I'm here for, to answer any questions, I'm here to thank you for your support. Thank you for everything that you do on the Planning Commission. I know it's not easy. I hope that we can come together and make some important decisions that's going to impact our city. And that's about it. Thank you. And you know, the last thing is the agenda. As far as the agenda, if the Planning Commission would want to make a decision tonight, I know if having an agenda earlier for you to review is better than that, let's, you know, let's come to agreement and say, okay, let's get a couple more days to get the agenda, and we can review it now, make some better decisions. So just let me know, guide me. I'm here to listen and observe also, so thank you.
Scott, are you frozen again? Looks like it.
You're up, Gary.
I guess so. So let's throw this open then to the Planning Commissioners, and we can start with the chair. Mr. Griffith.
I don't really have anything to say. I didn't ask for this meeting. I do want to respond to Mr. Nunez. I don't put time limits on these meetings. However, I don't feel like we should be wasting a lot of time. And as far as that goes, I, that's just, I don't believe we should be there till one A. M. As far as continuing things, continuing things is something that we just don't do because we don't want to have to take a look at it or make a decision that night. When you continue things, you delay things. You can delay it a month. For a developer, that can cost them thousands of dollars in interest. And so I think that that's not something we should just use just because. It should be done sparingly and for a specific purpose. So I do want to say that. That's my feeling. That's just how I am. I think some people feel that way, some don't, but I have gotten feedback from some developers that they don't really like to have things continued because it does delay projects. And if we want to move forward in the city, delaying projects is definitely not the way to go. But I didn't ask for this meeting. I generally don't have many issues because I just come in, I do my job, and I go home. So that's all I have to say right now.
All right, Vice Chair Duffel.
Oh, you're back on. I'm sorry, Scott.
Good evening, everyone. Like most of you, I'm not quite sure about what the meeting is about this evening, but served on the Planning Commission for a number of years, and I have served on some commissions that the meetings went until one o'clock in the morning, and sometimes that is necessary. I can vouch for Chair Griffith. He does not put time limits on meetings. He wants to get things worked out, as do, I think, all of us. We don't want to put time restraints on things, but at the same time, we want to balance that out and give developers every opportunity to move forward with a streamlined process. One of the problems in Desert Hot Springs for many, many years, coming out of the developers' mouths, was it was just too hard to do business in the city of Desert Hot Springs, took too long, cost too much money. So we didn't see a whole lot of development. The word on the streets now from these developers are, you know, Desert Hot Springs is, is looking like a great place to do business. A lot more people are coming here. And I do anticipate some of our meetings going quite a bit longer than, than others, but I also anticipate that there's going to be some meetings that come through where there's not going to be a whole lot of discussion, and, and things are going to move fairly quickly just because it's, it's very obvious. It's not, not a whole lot of questions to go around. I hope that all of our commissioners would take advantage of every opportunity they have to pick the brains of staff. I've done so for years, and I've learned a lot thanks to staff. I've learned a lot on my own. I've learned a lot from council members, current and past. And the more you open yourself up to being able to listen for an answer rather than listening to respond, I think we'll all be in a much better, better place, and that's all I have.
Commissioner Adell.
I've been actually thinking, I've actually put some thought about, thought into what I would say in this meeting, not really knowing what the agenda was, and I actually just had a couple of suggestions that would make my, I can always speak for myself, that would make my life easier as a commissioner going forward. And I'm happy to share those with you right now, if you're interested, but I mean, in my mind, what I don't know is what the city staff actually does do. Now, I do, I know that they're professionals. It's their job. They do it full-time. As commissioners, we're only, you know, a little bit of part-time, you know, each month. I would feel more comfortable under, I could understand better what I need to concentrate on, like sidewalks, for instance. If I knew what the city staff is already concentrating on, why, why would both of us do the same? why, why would both of us do the same level of analysis, for instance? I would love to meet with the city staff sometime in the future to actually go through a, an action, you know, any, any development, any, any project. So I could watch how they analyze things and learn from that. And my other suggestion is consistency from the city in the documentation that we get. And it's, and I've talked to actually Robert Griffith about this before, and maybe others. There, the city's better at it now, you know, we've, the problem we've had is there've been various, there've been a couple of different directors of the planning department over the last year. It's been three, I guess, right, in the last year? So I, I miss that consistency. But I, I would love to also work out with city staff a consistent document that we would get, you know, add to, you know, new housing development. And I would just feel more comfortable if they always said very clearly, this is what you are being asked to do. With someone then, either during the meeting or in the same document saying, this is, you're not being asked to do these things, only concentrate on these things, because time really is kind of an es, kind of the essence in all that we do, whether it's in the meetings or studying and reviewing all these things. Why spend eight hours reviewing something that the city already has totally under control and, and has negotiated and finalized and everything else, for instance? Anyway, those are my thoughts.
I appreciate those, thank you. Next on my screen is Commissioner Meyerhoffen.
Yes, Mayor Mattis, thank you. You also remember Pi, I, I kinda wanted this meeting myself. So I, I've got a request interest in because I'm not quite sure as the members were saying, what, what direction are we going with the city? As far as billing and planning. So that's, that's, and there were some other questions here that I've been making notes here that I'd like to respond to. The agenda. I hate to say it, I'm old enough now that I'm retired. And if I worked full-time to go over this agenda, which is what we're supposed to be doing, going over. Let me remind the, the commission that State of California was sued by developers to do away with the commission. So we're there to understand what the jobs are of the city staff and make sure that things are going to accord, according to how they should be going. So however long the meeting takes, that's how long the meeting is gonna take. As far as how the developers are losing money because they need another, we wanna give them another month. When I asked for a continuance, it's because I think the developer needs to go back and maybe look at something else. There was one developer and I suppose it's a shame you have to deal with all those septic tanks. And they got to thinking about it and they switched their plan around. They asked for that thirty day extension, they came back, the commission, they, they switched it. So sometimes this is, is good, as far as them losing money, developers in this area, as far as I can remember, as long as I can remember back to twenty years when I was first got involved with the city here as I have Parks Commissioner, the chairman for the Parks Commission. A guy named Ali Babas, I mean, maybe remember him, he, he taught me a lot. And the developers walk away from million dollar projects just to get on to the next one. And we've had, I've seen the developers come into our city hall in front of the city council and just turn around and just walk away from, from projects. I haven't seen that recently, though. So it's our job as commissioners to understand what the city staff's jobs are and understand what's happening, what's developing. If I don't know what's going on in Pearson Boulevard with food trucks or cargo containers or everything, what's the vision for Pearson Boulevard? How is it that the developer understands what that vision is for Pearson Boulevard? I don't know. How do they come? What are we doing? We're gonna put all cargo containers and repurposed buildings on Pearson? And what that does when you study the real estate, when I first got into this, I started studying everybody's jobs and then I went into the development part of it and asked myself the question, why are we developing? Been around here for over forty years and I'm still looking at vacant lots, why? So and that's one of the reasons, the developers don't understand what's really going on and what this, what direction the city will go next. The overlays of commercial and then we have an overlay, I'm sorry, residential with the overlay of commercial. How do you know what to build there? So basically back to Pearson Boulevard, if you're a developer and you go in and you, why would you put up a two-story concrete building? You can't compete with the rents of the older buildings and the cargo containers. So you're not gonna put up a two-story concrete building, are you? So this is the problem we're having here. What are we, we're not, I don't think we're looking at what the developers are really looking for, so they can come to Desert Hot Springs and know exactly what they're supposed to, what exactly is expected of them. And three or four years down the road, a lot that they bought for an invest, future investment will still be there and still be zoned for that. Because that's what they're looking at. On the subject of the sidewalks, when you look in the, in our general plan, you'll see some beautiful wide sidewalks. There is only two buildings that have been built with the sidewalks that represent that general plan. And those two buildings are the County of Riverside, the new library and the building next door to you. So the County of Riverside took the time to look and say, hey, this is what we're supposed to develop, this is how they want it, and that's what they gave us. Where are we at, where's this happening with our developers and why aren't we sticking to those white sidewalks? So that, that's another problem. I, I, and I don't think we're working together as it's. I, I, I make a suggestion that I don't think we're, we're, we have to do development for, that is user-friendly for our citizens. My comment was, yeah, we need, we need to start looking closer at user-friendly development for our citizens. Commissioner looked at me like, didn't have a clue as to what I was talking about. I said it in a public meeting and nobody ever asked me, hey, what are you referring to? I'm referring to sidewalks, I'm referring to buildings that are set back, so when people come to eat their meals, they can look out of their car. Crime is going up throughout America, so let, build stuff to where people feel safe and comfortable when they go into those buildings. I, I don't, I don't understand some things. One thing I don't understand is, and I'll just use this for an example, if we build a building on and give it an address of Palm Drive. But the egress in the front door, say on First then where is the real true address supposed to be? Palm Drive or First Street is supposed to be where the front door is and the egress is. So then you go to the ABC board and you approve a liquor license for something that's gonna be, say, walk-in travel, walk-in people, you wanna hit that targeted area. But then you give them a license for a toll pack to be thrown over the shoulder because you don't wanna drink just once, now they're gonna be walking down through the neighborhood. How much is that gonna cost the police department on their budget? We do things and we, we wonder like, okay, what, my, my question on that one would have been, I can make it to that meeting, but would have been, how much in emergency services for this type of thing in that area, what it costs? We don't know. So we're looking at some of this stuff, we're proving stuff that causes problems for code enforcement in the future. And as long as our, our emergency services. Look down here, my, my other problem is when the cultivators first came, someone got mad at me because I stood up and I said, you're never gonna get rid of that smell, the guy, he legally can't get rid of it. They finally got rid of it and, and I'm, and that's good, a lot of citizens are happy about that. So they were, they care of that and I figured they would be over the course of time of modern technology and stuff. However, I also said you, you, you want to, you want the tax revenue from that square space and for square footage for the cultivation of the growing, right? So instead of having the parking, you put that in and then on the other side of the fence, and I don't care what the cultivators do on, on their side of the fence, as long as the building looks nice. I understand what they're doing there, as long as the building looks nice and it doesn't interfere with the citizens. But now we have workers coming and it's the city's gonna have to straighten it up. Workers coming to work and their cars are right bumper to bumper. You shut the whole place down when somebody has an emergency? So we got a problem with that. So there's a few other things, but I don't want people to get impatient with me and continue on. So basically what I'm really looking at is, yeah, we need to look real closely at what we're doing, Pearson Boulevard, do you wanna put foot traffic there? Get some concrete and start filling in that little space between the, the curb and the sidewalk. There was a, a, one that I was looking at in that little space there. And the store owner bought some plants. And I'm, I'm grateful through that, I'm glad they're trying to fix the place up, make it nice. I don't have a complaint about that. But the problem is it was the wrong plants, you got bubbler's coming out or drip, little drippers coming out that are sticking up, you open up the car door, you're gonna have foot traffic. It's a safety issue. So if we're gonna do this, let's do it correctly. I, I spent some time in Santa Barbara when I grew up, the, the art show down there, I was probably ten years old, the State Street cruising, we used to have to go across, walk across the sidewalk on, or I'm sorry, crosswalk to get across the freeway. Daytona Beach, Florida, I spent time three months right there and seen all this foot traffic, so I don't comprehend what you guys are doing up there on Pearson Boulevard. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mayor Mattis, for having this meeting, I appreciate it. And yes, Mayor Mattis, I did listen to you the first, the first time you addressed the, the commissioner, I had a little trouble logging on, but I did go back and I heard everything you said that first time. I appreciate you, your support for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm gonna ask, the last person to speak is Commissioner Grant, I, I'm hoping that you're still on, I haven't seen you participate in this meeting since you got here. Are you there?
I'm here. What do you mean not participating? I'm, I'm here.
Public officials should be on video and on speech, whatever you wanna say, when, when attending the meeting, so I was just wondering if you were attending, I just saw your background.
I've been here, I'm having technical difficulties as you were, Mayor Mattis, and I'm just sitting here listening and then just trying to write down some comments and some things that I have, just so I could respond to everybody, but I'm present. The other issue that I'm having is
Perfect.
Get my background to, to what it's supposed to do, so I was working with my Zoom in the interim, but I've been here.
Great, now you heard everybody's comments, so it's all yours.
I don't know where to begin, I, I have so much to say, but it seems like so little now that everyone else has spoke. I'm one of the commissioners that did ask for the meeting as well. I have some concerns. As far as a commission, we should be working together. We should be concerned about the community as well as the developers coming in. I've been in two meetings, well, several meetings, two of them where it's been an issue in regards to time. However, sitting right here in this particular meeting, we're discussed, where people are vouching for one another and saying that they don't have issues with time. I'm meeting in July from my notes, if I look at it. Our chair said he planned on leaving by six thirty, that was a concern for me. So I'm just gonna throw it out here because we're all here. And granted, it was a very short meeting at that particular time, it wasn't a lot for discussion. I just didn't feel that comment was appropriate for the general public. It should not have been mentioned like that because it gives the, I guess, idea to the public that we are not concerned about them, or I guess the developers about what's going on in our city. That is a concern for me. Additionally, we've had items that I think were not my first meeting that I wrote down, it's like some things had been rearranged and granted, we all agreed to it. However, at that particular time, members that wanted to come and speak for public comment did not have an opportunity to come and speak during public comment because we had already arranged, rearranged the agenda. And it seems like at that particular time during that meeting that we were looking and trying to get a pass-through vote on something that it seems like maybe other commissioners, maybe, I don't even say council, but it seems like it, it just wanted to be passed through. And I feel that there was no deliberation or anything, and these, this is what we're here for. We're here to analyze, look and respond and make appropriate suggestions to staff or developers that basically best suit our community, and I don't always feel that we're doing, doing that. Then we have another issue from May, a motion, a motion that was made that actually needs to be brought up and put back on our agenda. And I've been waiting, so I guess that, all right, I'm meeting, I'll ask for it tonight because this is something that I've discussed with staff. And it's just like, okay, so how long is it going to take for these items to be, you know, brought back up for discussion? Then we had one of our last meetings that was really a concern for me, and I, it's to pretty much reiterate everything that Betts has said, Councilman Pi has said, Councilman Nunez has said, Chair Delphal and Vice Chair Delphal and Commissioner Nindel and Commissioner Meyerhoffen. There, we have a, the, the concern with me is we had a project that also came up. And there, they wanted to change, like, I wanna say something with parking and it was a concern that after we voted or were going to vote, that they were, staff was going to handle it. It should have been discussion where the commission was actively involved and was able to kind of make a determination and not just left up to staff alone. So it was a, there's just been several concerns, so for me. And I guess that's all I have to say unless anybody has any, any, must ask me any questions, but I'm here participating, but it's just a lot for me to like take in and digest right now because I've seen a lot and, you know, I love, you know, being able to have this time in service and with the agenda as well, let me say this, we've had, it comes through electronically, I would love to have a printed version, but I do know staff would provide me with one. In addition to the agenda, we've had some issues where the staff reports were not available. We've also had things with the agenda where we're getting emails last minute or things that have been changed on the agenda goes to staff and it comes through us. We need to ask for a continuance because we haven't had an opportunity to review, so I think that would be in the best, I guess, discretion for us to say a continuance, and at that time we have done so. But there's just things that we just need to look at as a whole for our community and with the city and developers, you know, just to make sure that we're, we're putting our best foot forward. And that, that's pretty much all I wanna say. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
You're so welcome. I'm gonna take some time and try to answer some of these questions in light of the fact that it's five o'clock so that every council member doesn't have to jump in and try to answer them, so whatever I don't get to will give the council some time. I appreciate all the commissioners and your comments tonight. Some of you had some great feedback. I, I'm gonna be honest with you, you're each appointed by a council member, right? You don't have to work as a team, you're gonna come in with your own opinions, but the law does state that you're there to make a decision based on the building code, the policies and procedures of the community, which is Desert Hot Springs, the specific plan. And, and that's what we're there to do. Now, I think there are some great comments, yes, you can, you can get into a project and if you wanna see different types of sidewalks and different types of landscaping, those types of things, I think that's a great opportunity, that's what you're there for. But we're all in this number gonna agree, and that's what I think we need to understand right off the bat. There is contention on your commission, I'm gonna be honest with you. And some of you are causing it purposely, and you should stop doing that. You should respect each other for their own opinions, you really should. The chair himself has a right to reorganize the agenda to accommodate requests sometimes, and that will happen, I do it. I usually ask the committee, the city council if they're okay with me rearranging, because there's some people in there that are costing the city of Desert Hot Springs an hourly rate of upwards of two to three hundred dollars an hour sometimes. So I visually see that, being on the city council for fourteen years, I see people sitting in the audience and I'll try to get them out of, out of the door as quick as possible. Now, there's gonna be sometimes that they will ask to even be accommodated before public comment, and I usually try not to do that. But it is the chair's prerogative, for the most part, to do that, that's what they're there to do is chair the meeting. Now, you guys will have an opportunity to change the chair position at the beginning of the year, and when you do that, you can do that. But for right now, you, whether you, you like the position or not, or the person or whatever it is, you, you should respect that position for the most part. There's a couple of things I did here tonight, and I would really encourage you guys to sit down with staff and have some long discussions. They can do it via Zoom, the city manager's office, I think, has always said that they're open to you guys. They can do it via Zoom. The city manager's office, I think, has always said that they're open to you guys. You're gonna have corrections. Our staff is human. I think our staff is some of the top individuals in the valley. And if you actually take some of your time and meet with them and talk with them, you'll find the knowledge that they have behind them. I've met all kinds of different political figures throughout the almost 15 years that I've been on the city council. And there's people that are, they're culture full and some that are half empty and some that I think they're there to. Tell staff what they're doing wrong and others are there to find information and try to get projects through and everything in between. So I get it. I know there's different personalities. I know there's different ways to do things. I heard a lot, let's work as a team, but what does team mean? Because sometimes we just have a different opinion and we're not gonna be able to be on the same team, to be honest with you. It just doesn't happen. I've, I think every one of my council members up there on the dais today, I've had a difference of opinion. And even the ones I worked closely with, I've had votes opposite of them. It's just sometimes you're gonna find difference of opinion and what you think the city should go. But the specific plan basically leads the direction. It can be changed if you find there's something important on there to be changed. And that's where you'd want to send that to, through staff, to city council for us to, to really look at. But honestly, you know, the downtown, I think Ted, you kind of came in towards the end of the planning of that downtown project. There's a developers that came through and decided that that's kind of what they wanted to propose. And it's, it's moving forward and it's not against the code. And so how do we enhance it to make it work right? And I think Ted, you just, you probably have an opinion and that's not what you want to see down there. And that's okay. That really is. It's honestly okay. There might be three or four of the commissioners that think that, that it is okay. And we just have to know when to, you know, give our opinions and be able to move on. I've known quite a few of you for quite a long time and I could tell you right now, we all, there's a lot of difference of opinions in a lot of different areas. But overall, you have a specific plan. You have a planning department, a community development director who's fantastic, even though he's acting right now. That can lead you guys in the right direction. And our city manager's office will be right behind him. You've got Danny Porres, who's spent so much time in community development. In his career here, he can tell you how things are going. If you disagree with it, you should really ask the questions and, and get those answered before your meeting. I know it's not enough time, but once you've read a secret document, you've pretty much read them all. There are certain things that will change in there. And if you ask the city attorneys off or somebody, they can probably highlight the areas that you're probably gonna want to look through and really focus on. But for the most part, a lot of them are pretty similar. So when you have a 5,000 page agenda and 2,000 pages of it is a CUP or a Sequa or something. In there that you probably can skim through a lot of it. But the first couple of times, you're probably gonna have to read quite a few words. And I get it, sometimes Thursday is not enough time for you to get through those documents, but you're gonna have to do the best you can. The law is not gonna change. The policies, I don't think are gonna change. I know that Russell Betts, our council member, has been advocating for that for years. And it's just the way the staff reports get funneled through and get triple checked and everything. It's just really hard to get them out before Thursday. But it doesn't, doesn't mean that if you know a large project's coming through, that you can't spend time with staff weeks and months before that. So if you see a large cannabis building being built or getting ready to be built, or you see the first phase of it coming through. And you want more information, there's no reason not to have that information upfront and be able to sit one on one with our staff and ask the questions you might have before it even gets there. So, you know, looking at some of the other things here, let's see. I just really want to iterate that we're all not gonna, we're all not gonna think alike. And you're, you're probably never gonna change everybody's mind on the fact that you want things a certain way. I like purple trees and I'm never gonna get everybody to like purple trees. It's just not gonna happen. And we've got to come to that conclusion, but treating each other with respect at the dais and making sure everybody, you know, is able to get there. And if, if you feel disrespected, then you need to step forward and you need to have that conversation with the chair, the vice chair, or the person that you feel disrespected with. I can tell you, and I think they can all raise their hand, if each council member here, if I've ever had an issue with them, I've talked offline with them about it. And sometimes I'm not always right. But it's the way it happens. But we're here to represent the city of Desert Hot Springs. And there's people out there that have had opinions about me that have never met me. And that's just life. That's the way it's gonna happen. And they think I'm gonna go to a certain way or do a certain thing. And I just, I've gotten past that over years. I'm up there representing my city and do what I think is best. And all that mumble jumbo about, you know, we just, the city staff already had this planned. Or they pushed you to do this, or you did this because the developer told you to. It's just a bunch of crock. We all know we're here. We don't make a lot of money doing it and we're here for the betterment of our community and that's what we need to do. You need to respect your staff. You need to respect your colleagues. That's all I ask. Besides that, have all the opinions you want. Request more time if you need it. You just might not get the support from everybody, but you can give it a shot. I'm gonna turn it over to the council to see if I missed anything. And then we'll do one more round with the commission if there's anything we need to follow up on. Mayor Potem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And I have taken a lot of notes here during this meeting from the input from the commissioners. And I have a couple of things I wanted to point out real quick. I know particularly for commissioners that have not served before or that are coming into this new, it can be a little bit daunting. And I, unfortunately, because of COVID, we haven't been able to send you all to the planning commissioners. Meeting that's put on by Cal Cities, League of California City. So hopefully we'll be able to do that this year. Because that'll give you a good training session on exactly what's expected of a planning commissioner in the planning commission role. But also in the, in the meeting particulars, how you do a meeting, how you make a point, how you follow through with. With the rules of order and how a meeting is conducted and the things that are expected you on that. So with, with any luck, I think we can, we can, we can send you all to those this year if they're holding them. Now that we seem to be on the out, out slope of COVID. The mayor had a good point when it came to. Came to the, the amount of pages in the agenda. And it took me a while when I was first appointed to the planning commission to, to wade through that. And then I realized quickly that there's a lot of it that you really can, as he pointed out. Just, just peripherally read and, and you know, things like. The building code, that our staff is not gonna put something on your agenda and before you unless they have gone through all of the particulars. In the building code to make sure that that item meets the building code. They're not gonna take it to you at a point where the developer is proposing to use. Things that would violate the building code. That's, that, all of those dots, dotted I's and crossed T's when it comes to the particular legalities of the building code. Are already gonna be addressed by the time it gets to you. So even though all of the paperwork is in there for it, because it is legally required to be in there. You should be able to trust the staff to know that, that the building code pieces. You know, that you have to use a 110 gauge wire and things like that are all, all taken care of before it gets to your point. I particularly liked Commissioner Nindell's point. Excuse me, of sitting down with staff and just seeing exactly what staff does. And I would encourage you all to do that. And I am sure that, that Mr. Brusale and the rest of the staff there. Would love to have you come in and just sit with them as they go through that process. So that you feel comfortable and you know the things that they've addressed and you know the things that, that they're gonna ask of you. So if you don't do that on your own, maybe we should look at, at setting up a. A couple of opportunities for you to come in. Two at a time on that so that we're not violating any open meetings laws. And, you know, and at that point, you could also work with them to go over the general plan. You know, we spent a lot of time over the last couple of years revising the general plan. And unless you were up to your eyeballs in that process, it's not gonna be a familiar document to you. And it's even as a council member, it's not terribly familiar to me. I'm always referring back to it. So that would be another option for you to go with. I appreciate the fact that we've had this meeting. I've gotten a lot of good feedback from, from all of you. I know that there is some frustration there on the, on the commission. And as the mayor said, you're not always going to agree. We as a city council don't always agree. And that's just the nature of the beast. But you can make your point, your opinion. You can make your point. And if you lose a vote, you lose a vote and you go on. And you still respect your fellow commissioners and you, we still respect each other on the council. We lose a vote, we move on. We win a vote, we move on. And, and you're not always gonna have a five, nothing, nothing vote. It's just, just not always going to happen. And that's great because as I said in my opening comments, you were appointed because of your knowledge and your skill set and your love of the community. And your knowledge and love of the community and your skill set may not be the same as your fellow commissioners. But that doesn't matter. You, you, you were appointed to make your voice heard and to make your voice representative of the rest of the people in the, in the city. And it's not always gonna be 100% in agreement. So I guess that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor, and I'll turn the time over to whoever you call up next.
Yeah, thanks. First, Ted, those were good points on the sidewalks regard, at the county library in the building next to it. I actually hadn't considered that, but you're right, there's a proper setback there and you got a good eye for that detail. You know, we're talking about differences on the commission. And that was mentioned and what I see is the difference, I've watched the planning commission is, it's a debate over, do we get into the details? As planning commissioners, or do we just let staff work it out? And the public process is that you're supposed to work it out. Is there sufficient parking spaces? We had a debate years ago over a project on. Recess deposit, the parking standard was 2.3 spaces per unit to allow enough parking. That ended up going in with 0.9 parking spaces. The people who were arguing against lowering the standard said there's gonna be cars parked all over the street. Across the street from those residential homes and taking up their parking. Now guess what happened? There's cars parked across the street, taking it up because 0.9 home spaces per unit isn't enough. And you got a parking mess down there. And so that's the kind of detail you get into and you're supposed to look at and resolve and sort out. So if it's, you know, do you let staff work it out or do you work it out? My answer is always gonna be, you gotta do more work. You gotta roll up your sleeves. You gotta dig into the details. And you gotta make it work. And that's what's at play here, I see. I'll give you an example. You have a development come through, a housing development, and they've designated five out of the 20 residential units are supposed to have RV parking. Okay, so do you, is it just designated RV parking with a gate? But they don't put the curb cut that makes it like a driveway? They don't put any type of concrete that actually makes it like a driveway? They just go back and park on dirt? What do we do? We got lots of developments around here. I'm living in one of them. Where it's sold with a RV parking, but it's all dirt. Is code gonna now come along and say, hey, you're in violation of code? These are the type of details. I mean, you could go on endlessly about this. And you don't redesign a project, but you're supposed to as a commissioner, get into that kind of detail. Now, the closest I come to being a planning commissioner is my time on the airport land use commission. And I'm gonna tell you, there's some detail there because you're trying to follow, well, keeping. You know, people safe from airplanes, air points, safe from people. And you get into a whole lot of detail. The staff is very detailed, make very detailed presentations. But there's a bunch of people on that commission that really know their stuff. And once in a while, they're gonna disagree with staff. There's nothing wrong with that. And it ends up resulting in, you know what, you're right, okay, we can do that. Sometimes staff wants it to go one way and they're leading us the other. But you're supposed, you're not just supposed to accept what staff says. And we gotta, I like our staff. Danny, everybody there, Daniel, everybody's doing a great job. Juan, you're doing a great job. Everybody's doing a great job. But they're gonna come through with something that you may not agree with. And it's perfectly okay to tell them, sorry, guys, I don't agree with this one. Or hey, you missed something. Or hey, I don't think, I think you went with 0.9 on the parking standard and I'm gonna stick to 2.3. And the developers just gonna have to make their project less dense. Ended up with, I'll stop with saying, what really irritates me is when a planning commissioner will turn to staff and say, can we do that? As commissioners, you're supposed to know whether you can do that. You don't have staff if you can do that. Can we send this back to be continued? So that we can get this worked out and come back to us the way we want to see it. Can we do that? You shouldn't be asking staff, can we do that? You should already know you can do that. You, I are the final authority. I haven't seen developers that were complaining about our planning commission. I've sat there in planning commission meetings and watched them go, wow, that was a piece of cake. I haven't seen our planning commissioners been accused of being too tough on anybody. You can look around the city and see lots of examples where they haven't been. And that's years before, not, not speaking now. So our reputation can't be that we've been too tough on anybody. There's so many exceptions that have been made that have been such a detriment to the city. And it's, you know, that set us back and lowered our standards. So my pitch to all of you is please, go for a higher development standard. Look at those plans. And if you see a wimpy sidewalk, and that's what's been put forth to you by staff as a recommendation, say, staff, I'm sorry, but I don't want wimpy sidewalks in my city anymore. I want Desert Hot Springs to look as nice as any other city in this valley and we've gotta get there. And you guys, more than anybody, are the ones that are gonna make sure that we get there. So please, dig in, look at the detail. Do your homework and go for the highest possible standard that you can get and achieve. And nothing is about whether you like somebody or don't like about them. I agree with the mayor and Gary on that. But it is all about making sure you get this city looking beautiful. And don't compromise anything and don't make any mistakes on design.
Thank you, Mr. Betts. Just one correction. Mr. Betts is very passionate a lot of times. You can ask the question to staff if you want, but he is correct. You can also continue it. But you can feel free to ask any question you like to staff up there. You don't have to know everything. I can guarantee you right now, I am not as smart as most of the people on my city council. I didn't want them to feel like they couldn't ask the question.
No, I always ask staff. I said they're great people there. I wasn't, I was, that was not the context I meant in. I'm sorry if I wasn't clear.
I wasn't trying to correct you. I was just, I was just trying to clarify it. Ms. Pie?
There's a lot that's been said and I'm not going to repeat it, but I will tell you this. I'm not supposed to work with you as a team. You're supposed to refer things to the city council. If I work with you as a team, then the developer is gonna think that. All of us are a team and we're putting stuff together the way we want it. I'm not supposed to be that type of team with you. I have worked with people inside the city that know about planning. And I have worked with people outside of the city that know about planning. And that's beside staff is who I get my information from. I watch all of your planning commission meetings. I don't put my name out there, but I watch them. Because I need to understand how it came to me. And I don't need Duffel say to tell me what he did. I speak to whoever I appoint once. And I never talk to them like, yeah, unless they screw up, then I got something to say. But basically, that's it. And I think that the mayor and the rest of the council have made the questions, unless you got a question for me.
Nunez? Thank you. Great. I'm glad that we had this meeting. And I think you give a little insight on those who didn't know why we're having this meeting or what this meeting was about. I think this is a good, a good starting point to say that, you know, I, I hope that we can be on the same page. When we're in these meetings. And I learned a lot tonight to see what you guys are looking for and wanting. So I thank you and that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'll kind of go through the council real quick and see if there's anyone that didn't get their question answered or have any final thoughts, Mr. Chair?
I have nothing.
Mr. Vice Chair?
I just wanna thank everyone for being here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the meeting. Just wanna ask, you know, and, and also make the comment, when we have these planning commission meetings, when I go into these planning commission meetings and I'm speaking for myself here. I go in with one thing in mind and that is serving my city, serving the city that I was appointed to represent. I have no personal feelings that are going into this. It's all about the city. It's not about me. It's not about any one of you. It's about the benefit of the city as a whole. When I leave City Hall or when I leave the meetings. When I leave City Hall or when I leave the meetings, the meeting stays behind too. What happens outside of the meetings is outside of the meetings. What happens inside of the meetings is inside of the meetings. And though I may like all of you, I try not to spend time with all of you because I don't want to violate any rules. I want it to keep, I want it to have the appearance of being as clean and as smooth as possible and letting everyone know that the city of Desert Hot Springs is doing things the right way. Whether we agree or disagree, I respect you all. And I just ask for a little bit of decorum in our meetings. That's all I'm looking for. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Nindell?
I don't have anything else, Scott.
Commissioner Meyerhoffen?
Yes, Mayor Mattis. If a commissioner votes no, that doesn't mean they're against the whole concept of the idea. There just might be something in there that they don't agree with because they need to change. You know, I'm hard headed. Nobody's gonna, as most of you know me by now, nobody's gonna sway my vote. Not even council member Betts or the mayor. I'm gonna vote the way I feel. When I say we should work together as a team, I think I brought up the fact that I don't know what's going on on Pearson Boulevard at one of our before. You said, I brought it up before. I brought it up here again tonight. And we're
Can, can we, can we focus on that? Can, can we focus on that?
Send me something so I can see it.
Can we focus on that real quick, Ted? This is kind of a question that you, you've had multiple times. Um, can we, can we offer a meeting with our staff with you uh via Zoom or in person when it comes to these specialty projects to try to uh, at least get you the information you need? Would that help you? Uh, I'm just trying to find a solution to this because I've heard this over and over again that I don't, I don't know much about this project. So would that, but that be easier for you?
Um, Mayor Mattis, let me put to you different, I saw a project and I know you were involved. A plan for Pearson Boulevard that went back into First and Second Street. That's the last thing I've ever seen. It was a beautiful project. I never figured out how that was gonna ever get done, but you know, it was a beautiful project. So I guess I'm looking for something like that. It explains to me what's going on on Pearson. And I don't know if we have anything like that. Um,
I think what
I'm not against, I'm not against.
Ted, I think what the mayor was saying was that, that is available. And if you meet with staff, they'll, they'll lay it out for you.
Okay, well, that's great. I'm glad we finally got there because I've been trying to get, get to this point for quite a while. And that's what I'm saying, working together as a team. When you ask for something, why does it take for too much to, and, and have to have a meeting to get, get that information? If you, you know, I, I don't understand that. So anyways, I'm glad, glad we got that out of the way. Um, I appreciate the meeting. And it, it's been a, it's been an honor and a privilege to, to serve as a Parks Commissioner back in two thousand and uh, three years on the Public Safety Commission and and now to be here on uh, the planning commission. And the experience I got before was wonderful. And it's been an honor to serve the uh, to serve the citizens of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Grant?
Um, yes, I just want to say, and I guess probably reiterate some of the same uh, comments that some of the other commissioners have said and council members. It's never personal. It's about principle. It's really about the community. That's all that um, I care about. I'm here for that. Serving the community and our citizens and future developers because I'd love to see, see this city grow and have, have the type of growth that it, it could have. So I'm only here for good works and that's it. And that's all. So thank you for your time and your opportunity.
Thank you, everybody. Um, I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Um, I just ended on this is uh, Luke, uh, our city manager, Mr. Mr. Rainey, um, I think you can take some notes from tonight and also some of our department heads that are here can take some notes and um, be able to maybe reach out to some of you and maybe get you some answers. Uh, this staff is at your will. Uh, when it comes to these projects, they need to be able to answer these questions for you. And please don't hesitate to ask that question. And if someone doesn't get back to you, call me personally and I'll make sure that happens. Um, Mr. Rainey, you have anything that you want to add at the end? You're muted.
Sorry about that. I clicked on mute, but I guess it didn't work. Uh, absolutely, we'll take uh, the notes that we've all taken. And I've seen my staff busy here and we'll put them together and reach out to the commissioners and take it from there.
Great. And um, again, uh, all we ask is that everybody be kind and and allow the process to happen. We might not all agree, but uh, when it comes to the end of the day, it's still our responsibility to do our homework and get, get the answers that we need so that we can make the proper decisions for what Desert Hot Springs should look like based on our, our, our knowledge. So um, I don't know if I need to drag this out any further, but say to the city council, there is a um closed session after this for the city council. And Gerald sent out a new link for that. Uh, please look at your email for that. Um, and that'll, that'll be attended on Zoom again also due to the fact of um, the issues at City Hall. So with that, I appreciate again, everybody showing up tonight. We'll try to do this again if I see a bigger project coming down. Uh, Ms. Grant had a great uh, point uh, when we met and talked uh, that uh, urban planning and planning for the future is really important. And having the uh, planning commission and city council on the same page, we can't always work as a team. So we have different opinions, but on the same page, knowing where we're going forward is important. So any major projects uh, like that, I'll, I'll definitely throw it back at the chair for chair of the commission and see what your guys' opinion are. If, if you need to dig deeper into that and maybe have a joint study session, uh, we'll definitely offer that up. All right, fair enough. All right, guys. If we don't see you, have a wonderful holiday, however you spend it. And uh, Happy New Year. Be safe out there.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.